We're getting ghosted.
The show is.
Okay, so we can push the play button?
Uh, the red button's on there and it's...
It is now seven P M. Welcome to the Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three Town Council meeting. Appreciate everybody who's in attendance this evening. Um, we will not be broadcasting live tonight on YouTube, but we are up, we will upload it to YouTube. We are doing this in the back. Um, Brian Schultz, uh, had a, had an injury this week at work and so he's unable to attend this evening. So we wish Brian well on his return and basically want him to get better, um, because then he's, uh, has struggled with that for quite a lot. Um, but we appreciate Brian and what he does here. So we will upload this tomorrow to the website and so it'll be out there on YouTube channel. Um, I respect for all those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting and silence all cell phones, please. Uh, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Uh, Town Secretary Adam McEntee, please follow over.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lieutenant Wardney.
Here.
Ms. Selly, uh, Ms. Welling, Mr. Dietrich.
Here.
Dr. K, here, in the hall of honor.
Thank you. Councilperson Mark Dietrich and Malia is in your rotation.
Well, thank you for bringing us all here safely and having us return safely. Please help us make the decisions tonight that will benefit the town and its people, as you say.
Thank you. And Councilperson Hillier, we're hardly missed. Our pleasure if you could please run.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. So we've been, uh, working diligently to have a more efficient meeting, uh, for our council and with the help of some, uh, some folks. I know, um, Andrew, who's, uh, Chair of our, uh, planning and zoning, uh, who's, uh, does, just runs a, just a super efficient meeting. So I've been working with him a little bit, um, and he's been giving me some guidance to make sure we can get through the meetings in a quick manner. Um, obviously all, uh, all, uh, participants who take part, whether it's, uh, with the, uh, citizens or with the, um, Town Council, we limit, um, three minutes per question and answer. Um, total time allotted for any one, um, topic or agenda item will be to fifteen minutes, um, obviously or less. And, uh, council people will get one, one at a time and then we'll move to the next one, move to the next one, and then we'll come back around and do a second round of meetings in terms of any sort of debate that we have. And it's just, I've got a lot of feedback from the citizens. They like that we're making progress and we'll continue to do so as a council. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize our town staff. I know I did it out there. Uh, we just had our, uh, fourteenth annual tree lighting in our park. Um, I think it went well. Um, I think we went through all the hot chocolate and the cookies, which was exciting. But again, I want to thank the town administration for the work that they did. I lean, Lynn, um, Brian, Chief Rivas, and, um, uh, Randall, who actually were out there and they hung all of these lights. So it was, I came rolling up and they had one of those get moved out here and Randall was tied on top of it and Chief Rivas was speeding lights up. So big team event. I think the property looks beautiful now. We've got the tree, tree light, uh, I'm super excited and, you know, before we know it, Christmas and the holidays will be here. So appreciate the staff and everything that you've all done. Thank you. Um, first section, uh, is item two is our citizen comments. These are non-agenda subjects. Those citizens wishing to address an agenda item will be recognized at the appropriate time. Any citizen comments at this time will not receive any verbal council response, nor must the citizen expect any discourse with the mayor or other council member. This is a procedural role not intended to convey a lack of interest or discouragement, but rather to, um, provide time for all citizens to speak and to move on to the next, the new business of the council. As a reminder, all these proceedings of the Town Council, including citizen comments, are recorded for timekeeping purposes. We've got a few folks on here tonight. Uh, Mary Ann Doherty, are you here? Come on up to the podium and identify yourself and your name and your address, please.
Mary Ann Doherty, three forty Valley Trail. And I received in the mail, um, for a letter from Discover Loans, and it had, uh, Robert Hillwood's name on it. So I started to write, not at this address, and I noticed it was my address. So I opened it up and there was a phone number to call. I was afraid of it being a scam. So I walked up to Town Hall and I'm very pleased to say that, uh, Cassandra Gaines was available for me. She came on immediately. We went in the back room. She got all the facts. She went in and called for her name. And then, uh, the Discover Loans could ask to talk to me and I went in and made an entry that I did the right thing by coming up here and, uh, probably just Robert Hillwood was part of the scam. The letter was saying he wanted a seventy-five-thousand-dollar loan. But I just wanted to thank, uh, what do we call her assistant, Chief Gaines, for being available. I didn't have to have her call me and come back up and everything. So she did a wonderful job resolving it for me and I haven't heard anything since. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Chief, we pass on to you, sir. All right, great. Um, the next folks up, uh, it's really more of an introduction. Um, I don't think we need to introduce this first person. Um, and that is Jim Carter. Um, Jim, you're out here. Jim has been around, uh, Denton County for many years. He's been involved in, in, uh, so much and he's, he's contributed, uh, pretty much everywhere you can be in Denton County. You've got to be accurate, Jim.
I guess it's how you judge it, Judge. Uh, thank you. Uh, Chief, how you doing today? Hello, council. Let me start off by telling you what I try to tell every council when I go out first and first. Thank you for your service. I know what you're going through. I know that it takes time away from your family, uh, from other pursuits that you might have. So thank you for your service. Uh, I know what it takes. Uh, fourteen years I was mayor trophy club, first mayor, they didn't know each other. And, uh, so, thank you. I wanted to, uh, give you a couple of things. I'm here, my purpose here tonight is to introduce our new, uh, uh, town engineer for double. And you're gonna be very proud of this gentleman because we are. Uh, he is one of the top guys that we've got in, in, in the organization. And we, we wanted to you because we've got pretty, uh, good projects coming up here that we want to start as soon as we can and schemes of reconstruction. And we want to, you know, get you up onto that. But let me tell you a story first and it's kind of good part and bad part. And I'm gonna tell you some of the good parts first and then I'll tell you some of the bad parts. Uh, why don't we tell you the bad part? Why don't we tell you the good part? Anyway, the, uh, sixteen years ago, uh, Double Open wanted us as a town engineer. We've had that purpose of being a town engineer for all of that sixteen years. Now, the bad part is about sixteen and a half years ago, we, uh, applied to be a town engineer. And at that time, uh, Bill Wilkins, who was mayor, Dick Cook was on the committee of selection and Tom was as well, three former players. And, uh, and, uh, we had a, a, a young engineer about thirty-six on the, at the time. We had another fellow that was about forty-two at the time. And then look at me on the, and those gentlemen took a look at us and finally came back and said, you were just too young to do our job. I kind of liked that in a way, but not every way. But, uh, they tried another engineering firm for about six months and it didn't last and they came back and honored us with being a town engineer. That's the good and bad parts, I guess. So thank you very much. But let me tell you just a bit about the young man that you're gonna have now for your, uh, uh, town engineer. He is the, uh, project manager for us, for, for Bob, and he's done some excellent jobs. He's one of the guys that helped in a lot of part of the way through the road of reconstruction. And I'm, we are proud of that because we are, although there was some, uh, problems with getting that done. And I guess the mayor will pay a real good thing. The council's gonna do the, 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 the Denton County, uh, county, uh, come to the courts, come to the court tomorrow.
Yes.
And it's, it's wonderful. So we appreciate that. But Edgar Molina is a great guy. You're gonna really like him and you're gonna have an opportunity to work with very, very close. And he'll be here whenever you need him. Uh, again, I didn't give you my address. Uh, it's one double oh five, go over on the road. And it's one across the street. It's hard to... So thank you, folks, for that. And if, uh, mayor, uh, it's all right, I'll bring it.
Absolutely.
We also have another gentleman with us tonight from our county. Uh, his name is, Caesar Molina. They don't know how to spell it right, but he spelled it differently, but it's pronounced at some point. And, uh, one of them may be, so what do you expect? Anyway, the, uh, they'll be glad to talk to you too. And, um, Caesar has a couple things he'd like to say, wait, to you too. Come in.
Well, good evening, all. So, my name is Edgar Molina. I'm a faculty associate. Been there for about seven years now. Um, well, most of my background is in public works. I have a couple of years in, uh, land development. So, yeah, I'll be transitioning over to technical brand. Thanks for your position. I've been around before. So, um, anyway, so just to keep it sort of sweet, I'm looking forward to it. Um, I thought Steve can put her in the past. So, look familiar with what I'm doing here and I'll try to do my best to help you guys out with any meetings.
We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Caesar, hear him out.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, again, my name is Scott. I've been with half associates for, uh, three years. Prior to that, I spent twenty-three years with the City of Carrollton before retiring from there. Ten years before that, I was at Texop. So I've been around a little bit and I'm here to provide support for editor and, uh, teaming with the town we need. So, I feel pretty far.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I am, uh, trying not to break protocol, but because we typically don't respond, but I, I wanted half and associates to introduce these folks to the town because we have a lot of work to do ahead of us. We've got a drainage study. Um, yeah, the King's Road is gonna happen in the future at some point and we don't want to wait till three or five years down the road to start working on that. So I think we'll get some direction from them. Um, the, the, the information that Jim was just sharing is this council approved a, uh, a two-hundred-and-three-thousand-dollar, um, disbursement by Denton County to finish the Wakeville Road project and, and get it completely off the books. And tomorrow, uh, the Denton County Commissioners Court will be voting on that and, uh, we expect for it to be approved, which that officially closes the Wakeville Road project. So we're, we're excited about that. Um, but, you know, as, as Jim said, the, we've had a long-standing partnership with half associates and it had a, a little bit of change over here recently. It stabilized. Um, Randall and I will be taking a meeting with them here over the next couple of weeks. They, they went back and did some extra things on the drainage study for us. We're gonna sit down and review it and then we're gonna give a presentation ready to go for this Town Council and for the citizens starting in January. So stay tuned on that one. Uh, we did meet that window. Um, we just asked them to do a few more things. So, um, they're still on target. Um, so I just wanted to take a moment to, to comment on that. So appreciate that very much and I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Um, consent agenda, item number three. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the Town Council will be enacted if binding one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests. Unless the act will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning the consent agenda items is a big table for public review. So, council, we have the consideration. So I'm just, I'm gonna read along the words and then we can come back and see if anybody has any comments on it. We've got item one, consideration in action on minutes of November sixth meeting. Um, item two is consideration in action on meetings of our November thirteenth meeting. The reason why there's two weeks out there is because we didn't have a meeting on the twentieth, which we should have. We canceled that. Um, so otherwise we would have caught up there. Then we have consideration in action on a resolution finding that coserv gas limited statement of intent to increase rates within the town should be denied, finding that the town's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company, finding that the meeting at which these resolutions is passed is open to the public or is required by law, and requiring notice of this resolution to the company and the town's legal council. So I want to stress back that this is a, and they have an intent to increase the rates and we're asking the council to deny the rate increase. There is a public hearing that will be taking place in Austin on this, on December seventh, I think. I read through all of the paperwork and we definitely want to do our best to fight this rate increase if we can. So, um, and I'll ask them if we're able to finish this item and go to the next one. Then I'll ask if there's any questions for the council. And then the last item, number four, is consideration in action to approve, uh, use of the SLF RF funds for the pavilion speaker upgrade. This is more of a formality. We said, uh, this council and I said that when we got started here last May that we would, um, share with, um, the town all items of expense that were over two thousand dollars. Uh, this happened to be a six thousand dollar one or sixty-seven hundred dollar one that we approved. And I think we found out tonight that it was really good money. So with that said, council, I'm gonna go back. Any, any questions or comments on the consideration of the minutes for the sixth?
I have a couple. Um, I was looking through them and item number sixteen, moving the IT administrator from the music corps to administration. Um, again, as I said at the last meeting, that's a technology administrator. So it needs to be changed, technology administrator.
Thank you.
In minutes, please. And then, um, item number twenty, the pavilion speaker upgrade. I think the reason I sent here is because all of we talked about during the discussion, it wasn't part of the formal motion.
That is correct.
And so that, the, in, in item number twenty, in, in minutes, it shows that SLF RF funds were approved, but the motion didn't include SLR. So that should be, that should be stricken from that item because we're gonna fix that tonight.
Correct.
So, that's all I have on, on that one.
Anyone else on council? Anything with the minutes? Any questions on the coserv?
Well, I thought we were just doing number one.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, it, well, they said, I got headshots. There was nothing on it. I didn't want it to...
Oh, I have something on two.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I apologize. Um, I misunderstood. Can we move number two and separate that out from number seven, please?
And the, the purpose for that?
Um, it, it turns out that the application for that vacancy came in after the deadline. And you said that, uh, in the, when you published that, the citizens of Double Oak that applications came in late when to be considered?
Yes, and we had that same thing happen, uh, in, on six five, uh, where applications came in after the fact. And the council got together and said that we would go ahead and honor the, um, Mr. Blesch's who's came in after that. I went back and pulled all the, um, documents, the emails, and went into the metadata to see. Um, we've, uh, officially, um, voted on, uh, a council person. Um, I think that, uh, we're gonna move forward without, um...
Actually, mayor, um, at the meeting, when David Blesch's, um, application had come in late, the council, um, there was commentary and that was not considered for that reason because it had kind of like, I believe that Mike Wharton was the one that brought that up.
That is correct.
So...
And we went ahead and honored him to be a part of the...
So, so basically you put in requirements and then you don't honor them because, I mean, it's, it's confusing to the, to the citizen when you say one thing and then you change your mind. And, and also on this one, I don't know, if there was a conversation among the council members about honoring that, I was not aware of that. So maybe I got excluded from that conversation.
No, I, I went back and looked at the, uh, the fifth. I looked at emails back through that timeframe. Um, we're, we're going back to when, um, uh, Councilperson Dietrich was put on when I vacated the spot, moved up from there. Um, we don't have to do any of that. All right. In fact, our town attorney said we probably should just go ahead at, at meetings and nominate, vote and see what happens versus vetting it out to the public. And, and we tried to do a transparent thing, uh, with allowing citizens to get involved, to fill out applications. And, and we did that. And, and when we did it the first time, we had, um, a, a person who we allowed to be in the nomination process that came in after the, um, the deadline was met. And so the precedent was set there. And when it occurred again this time, it's really hard for us to go back and say, well, we did it there, but now we can't do it here. And the fact that we didn't have to do any of that, but we did it from a transparency perspective, um, basically, here's, here's the what-if of the future if, if we would have, um, changed that up. Um, and that would have been that, um, there was one nomination. The nomination, uh, potentially could have not gone through that second. The same with the other person who did get nominated, which would have put the same exact thing back to this council on this meeting, to which we would have then vetted exactly the same way again. And so we're just, we're continuing to, to kick this down the road. And so really what we're doing tonight is that we had a nomination process. The nomination had a second. It was voted. We have a new council person and we're moving forward from there. Yes, sir?
Is there anything the town bylaws that say we have to have an application that there's a time limit?
There is not. In fact, it doesn't say anything in there. We did that to try and provide transparency and give opportunity. And I, I was advised both times by the town attorney to not do that and just go ahead and show them a meeting and have nominations. And so moving forward, since we had this controversy the first time, we haven't been in the second time. Um, if when or if on the third time, we'll just do it the way that it's supposed to be done. So we're removing the item or we're keeping it? Like consent agenda?
We just filed a status and it be removed and voted on separately.
Okay. Yeah, that, I mean, okay, thank you. All right. Um, anything on, on item four? All right. Um, we've identified directions to the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items west of item two? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve at minutes of November sixth. I move that we approve the, the resolution finding the coserv gas limited statement of intent to increase rates within the town should be denied. And I move consideration, I move approval of using SLF RF funds for the pavilion speaker upgrade.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Hillier and a second by Councilperson Dietrich. Eileen, could you please call a vote?
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Uh, Dr. K. Hi, Mr. Wharton.
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Okay. The consent agenda items one, three, and four passed. Now we move to vote on the, uh, agenda item number two. Uh, removing the item from the consent. Um, so, do we have a motion?
We're just voting on the...
Item number two.
As they are.
Just the minutes as they are.
Okay. I move that we approve the minutes for November eleventh, twenty, twenty-three. November, I'm sorry, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Deputy Mayor President Wharton and a second by Councilperson Dietrich. Eileen, could you please call a vote?
Mr. Wharton.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Dr. K.
Aye.
Consent agenda item passes. Moving on to item number four, mayor council members and staff reports. Um, Dr. K, welcome to the castle. This is, this is that timeframe when you get to share or, uh, if you've got anything that you'd like to report out on?
Uh, not really.
Okay, thank you. Councilperson Dietrich.
Uh, I'd like to say that Brian's helping everybody. We got the speakers this whole. If you were there this evening at the tree light, you know what they noticed that. So that turned out pretty well. Uh, got put in a week and a half ago and so it turned out well. The only problem was, uh, daddy running the music couldn't get, here comes Santa Claus to play. It started out with, but beyond, uh, operator error, uh, it, uh, that was all that's all been. Seems worked really well.
Marcus does the music for how many years now?
Oh, my goodness. Ten. Good being ten. Every mile speakers here for a long time.
Um, well, we, we appreciate the work that you did for coming, Brian, and, uh, Deputy Mayor President Wharton in terms of getting the, the lead to a point where I think the Double Open's club are super excited about their events coming up and they're, they're gonna be able to take advantage of it. So...
I even forgot one, one year and they called me, "Were you coming?" I was like, "No." I had to break the silence here.
That's it. Uh, Councilperson Hillier.
Uh, I just want to say it's great seeing, uh, progress on, on the jobs that we're all happily waiting for. Um, and as I, from time to time, we're driving around Double Oak in the evening. It's really, um, hits me in the holiday spirit to see all the people who put out holiday lights, home decorations. So appreciate everybody who's gone on to the extra work to do that.
We will be getting the, the award approved update with, on Brown. It's probably gonna be January before we'll be able to report out on that. So... Deputy Mayor President.
Yes, I want to thank Mark for all the work he did. I know we pat him on the back a lot tonight, but I just want to think, he really did it. It took a lot of work to get those speakers and everything, you and I. And he really stayed behind us when, when it happened. I really appreciate it. So...
You're welcome.
Glad I got that in time.
Yeah. Any? Okay. Um, kind of echo some of the sentiments that you shared here. Um, it's that time of year where it seems like you want everything to slow down, but it all speeds up. And, you know, you, you drive around, as, as Gina said, you see a lot of the Christmas lights coming up. And, uh, if you need to do, I'd put a drone up and fly over Double Oak just to kind of see what, uh, what we look like from the, from the sky. But I don't think, uh, DFW or corporate allows to do that. Um, and, uh, the other thing is we still haven't slowed down on our, uh, our roofing. Uh, I think Randall will be talking a little bit about that, so I don't want to steal any of his thunder. Um, but more importantly, uh, we want everybody to have a safe holiday. Obviously, we have another meeting coming up, so that will not be canceled. We will be, um, uh, handling that meeting as scheduled on the twentieth, I believe. Uh, and then it'll kind of be one of those things where, uh, everybody... Uh, and then it'll kinda be one of those things that where everybody runs off and spends the holiday with their friends and family, so. Um, but I'm definitely looking forward to, um, what we need to do to, to get back to work on our ordinances. Um, I think that's something that we definitely need to start to tackle real quick. And then, of course, um, roads and drainage are now, uh, I believe the roads group is going out and driving some town. And then we'll be working with HAF on the drainage portion, so a lot of work to do, but we're gonna be getting ready quickly to hit it harder come, uh, January, so. Uh, your public works, public enforcement now will control. We're in votes.
Yeah, I'm gonna write, uh, a couple of updates. One, uh, it's been a real pleasure working with HAF, and I look forward to the transition. Uh, actually, uh, met both Caesar and Cesar, uh, both, uh, along the process. Um, I did meet with Brandon previously about two weeks ago. We went and we took a look at how the work, uh, the roads were progressing for the four roads that did take on improvements. Uh, we did assess some areas that, uh, needed minor attention. We're making sure that, uh, that those areas, uh, weren't ongoing issues that we're gonna see future cracking and possible sub, uh, separate issues. They were not, they were identified, that they were just, uh, due to the weather. However, Peachtree did, uh, did attend, and in a good faith gesture, they went ahead and moved forward, and they are going to crack seal those with the company that we currently use. Uh, and they're gonna go ahead and seal those off so that way that there's not an ongoing issue, and so that's gonna be taken here for the school. So I wanted to start off by just letting you know, we are keeping an eye on that detail, and HAF is working closely with us, making sure that we continue to keep down those projects where we are utilizing Peachtree as well as HAF. So I just wanted to start off with that. Um, the other I was going to lead into is to let everybody know, I know I spoke about it last time, but I definitely wanted to echo it. If you see white markings on the street, uh, and they're quite lengthy due to, uh, areas where the road is unleveled or we have a lot of, uh, cracking, please note that is public works, that is myself. I am marking areas to bring to attention to the roads committee, uh, to let them know that while we have roads that are on the list, that are up and coming that normally we would get to, we have areas that really need attention, uh, really bad. And so if you do see them, please note that that is to bring that to their attention so that we can look at possibly moving that forward and bringing that to the council's attention in the very, very close future, 'cause I've spoken with the roads and drainage committee, or the roads committee, I apologize. Uh, and they're fully aware of it as well, so we will bring, we'll be bringing some of those roads forward so they need attention as well.
Yes, sir?
Yeah, that area of Twenty-Five Kings between, was it Plus?
And Victory.
Or, yeah, that area, boy, that's, that one's lit.
That's cool, I'm glad.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're not gonna be able to wait for Kings Road, we're gonna have to do some of that.
Yeah, I, I mentioned that to Dr. Goodman when he sent out an email to the roads committee, like we, I saw it, though.
Yes.
That's probably gonna be one of, um, Edgers' first projects, probably gonna be, I'm gonna take a look at it because, yeah, it's not coming back together like we thought would happen with the expansion and contraction.
No, that will continue, there's some, what appears to be some base builder in, in that section. We have a couple of areas in the Twin Lakes area that is very similar to that as well, and so we look forward to that. And then also working with HAF for the drainage, 'cause we do, uh, we do continue to keep an eye on those, uh, those type of things. As far as public enforcement, uh, we continue to address issues as they arise. Uh, the grass hasn't been on and off again. We get a little bit of warm weather, we get our very special weed that likes to sprout up, and then we usually get it right near the weekend, and then the residents usually cut it. We do, uh, communicate with them pretty regularly, and so anyways, that, that, that thing worked pretty well, in most parts. That's why the residents do a great job. Feel free to ask any, if there's any questions. Uh, as far as the roof permitting goes, we're, we're over four hundred at this point. We continue to get them on a regular basis. We're still seeing the effects of the summertime hailstorm that we did. We had, and also we had a hailstorm earlier on in the year in the spring as well. And so people are still following those insurance claims and working closely, uh, with, uh, with the contractors. And so we continue to see those continue to come in. I, I really don't know if that's gonna actually stop, because we are coming up on that season. Uh, we're, we're, we're probably gonna be seeing that again, maybe seeing onset of that. And so I just feel like this is gonna be a continuation. It just, to me, that's sort of fierce to me. I don't control the weather though, and I'm not the weatherman, so I could definitely say one thing and it turned out to be another. But as of right now, we continue. As you know, there's a lot of residential houses. We're only looking at a fraction of them that have actually started replacing the roofs, so we'll continue to see those come in.
Has anybody taken a look at our roof?
Yes.
Is the work done? Are we good?
We are. Uh, the type of shingles that we have on, on this is, uh, it, it's a very, very superior roof shingle. Uh, I can honestly say that I would, I would love for us to be able to get it replaced, because I would like a three-dimensional shingle, 'cause I think it'll make town a look really good. But because we did such a great job of putting a great roof shingle on there, we are still waiting for, uh, for that to materialize before we can actually do that. But we have actually, we've had three different companies do an analysis on it, and every time they come back with the same answer.
Well, no, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
I just, I just thought since you're talking about roofs, it might be...
No, 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 absolutely.
You know, make sure that ours is waiting for Santa.
And just to echo earlier what the mayor said, uh, he's been in conversations as well. Brown's is definitely chugging along. I talked with a contractor today, they are ahead of schedule. Uh, but we are coming into, uh, the December timeframe, so while they are ahead, they're also projecting, uh, contractors tend to slow down around the Christmas timeframe, but they do have a lot of eager contractors, so they may or may not, uh, continue to progress even through the holiday season, between Christmas to New Year's. But they are ahead of schedule and everything is looking really good. The original projection was for around March, uh, but they are definitely ahead at this time.
Let's leave it at March, true.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. We all get shamoed out there.
We'll just get, we'll just bless whenever they say we're done, we'll get a CEO, and then we can actually start to eat, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Amber. Thank you for the...
Is there one back there?
Oh, absolutely.
I think Ginger is...
Oh, yeah, yeah, come on up. You're fine, come on up, you know, this, this field.
Ginger, thirty-five Kings Road, and Ray will make him elaborate to this. Um, I'm sure you've been down in Shiloh and McMakin, um, on into Bartonville in the last couple of weeks. They are doing extensive utility work there, so I know it only probably affects that many six hundred feet to five hundred feet. It's the corner of Pott and McMakin, but I believe it's also gonna extend all the way down to the Bartonville store. So I think Capital Associates is involved in that as well. If you can elaborate, if you know anything on additional work, it is being conducted on the old Cummings property. But they have marked on Kings, Double Oak side, within our culvert, um, Kings, and it's always out prime parking, all sorts of lines. So if you know, if there was seen advanced notice or information, you can get the citizens going through that intersection on that coming construction.
Yes, ma'am. So I will, I will actually obtain more information on that. I know Flower Mount has a majority of that intersection, but I will get more information and I'll report back on that and clarify if there's anything. I do know that the property that was purchased a little less than a year ago, I have spoken to the owner because we had some ongoing maintenance issues regarding, uh, cutting the grass. And I did, uh, acquire, uh, what their improvement plans were for it, because the concern was, is are we going to see a huge onslaught of improvements for a bunch of tract homes with zero block lines to, you know, five to ten feet? And the owner at the time, I'm just gonna say at the time, I don't know if anything has changed, uh, had echoed that they had no desire to put a bunch of homes near the Double Oak area. If they were even going to consider putting homes, it was more near eleven seventy-one area, but they wanted to keep that same look and maybe plant more trees and deal with, uh, ag uses. In that section that's actually near the Sheldon and McMakin area. But again, that was at the original conversation when we were dealing with that. Now we're back on the early part of the summer, but I did get to meet with the owner and have a conversation regarding that.
Yeah, just as an additional FYI, the Cummings, former Cummings property does, um, sorry. So, um, does, uh, does, um, the triangle corner that sits across front thirty-five Kings, maybe on that part of the section there, so there has been extension utility work taking place there, 'cause there are utility homes, main transistors, uh, there's AT&T, there's cable work and all this kind of stuff. But the utility company that is handling this natural gas, inlay pipes, or whatever's going on, they are exploring that corner as well, so that is Double Oak. So that would be something that we need to probably keep an eye on, uh, moving forward.
Right, let's see what we can find out if there's a councilor.
Absolutely. I know that originally we had a, we had a huge upgrade, uh, from Kings Road, a majority of Kings Road for the electrical with co-cerv, uh, but I'll acquire that and I'll farm that, that's not a problem. Thank you, Ginger. Thank you.
It's for letting you go out of order, because you're...
Administration?
Well, the only thing I have is Carl Lee with our accounting firm. And we'll be starting our annual, uh, report tomorrow, so he'll be here for about three days.
Thank you.
What would you say, please?
Thanks, sir. Uh, I don't have our report in your package, I don't know if you can, but, uh, I had an opportunity to review if you have any questions. Uh, citations, uh, pick up just a little bit more than previous months. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for putting a word up in your Friday news article to remind our citizens to please slow down. Uh, make several stops for some of our citizens, uh, especially on the...
Anybody on council?
You know, the west side of the Kings Road, please slow down. Uh, our trailer, uh, still have it out there, moving it around. I had one request today to put it on their street, so we'll be more than happy to put it out there. Um, cost of service is pretty much about what we've had the last few months, so. I had a couple of DWIs and the rest of my ones over the holiday weekend, but not too bad.
Any questions for Chief?
I do have one question. Um, at least the meeting, it's been a while. There was a comment about being top head in, in management with a chief and assistant chief. So I'm kinda curious, how long have you been here?
January would be eighteen years.
Wow. Um, so have we always had, like, two mani, I'll call them management, administrative, executive positions? And have they always been chief and assistant chief, or has there been some other title? Can you give me a little history, 'cause I'm, I've lived here as long as you've been here, so I'm just kinda trying to catch up.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Since I've been here, there's always been a chief and a second in command. Now, the second in command have, has had several titles.
Oh.
Uh, it's only title changes. Uh, they, it's always called second in command. Uh, I was, I was sergeant, I was lieutenant, I was captain, and, uh, at this time, they were requested, uh, by previous administration if we could name the second in command assistant chief. I, I really didn't have any bond with it. There was no pay increase, no different duty assignments, it's just a title change.
Okay, so we always have, I, I guess I look at it as like a chief and then a backup. You're out or sick or on vacation or something, do they have a number two?
Yes, the number, the, the second in command is the backup to the chief.
Okay.
If the chief is gone, or the chief is fired, or the chief is vacation, whatever it is, second in command, second in, continuously, uh, operation for the department.
Okay, thank you. I just, I didn't know the history and I appreciate you sharing that, off the cuff.
Yes, ma'am. Any questions on the report?
Most of citations, oh, sweet.
Well, I, I think we've seen more, especially now, I'll hazard a guess, we're, we're fully staffed.
Yes.
So we can only put attention on hotspots that maybe are getting identified with the traffic.
Correct, and we've, uh, you know, we stepped up in control in the last month or two on Kings and, uh, Twins Road. Uh, we didn't get to, uh, publish our stats for Waiton, but we did have a high volume of traffic overall on Waiton and several speeders. Of course, it can be everywhere, so we'll try to focus on different sections at a time and, you know, and go from there. Uh, our, good thing of, our cars haven't broken down in the last few months. Usually, we have a car that's down and it, uh, it hinders us the point out there. Oh, I'm like, my time's up.
I'm on wood.
You would not have called me and said, "Mayor..."
Uh, but our, uh, yes, we've had luck with that the last few months.
Thank you.
Uh, we're still waiting on our tunnel, like I said before. It, it was gonna be a while, and it's, right now, it's in quality control. Uh, they didn't give me a date, uh, for when we'll get it out here, but I, we're, we're ready for it to come out here. And like I told Mr. Johnson, uh, we'll be coming back again this year, putting a request for another vehicle and replacing some of the old ones, because it's just taking too much time to order. We actually have the car in order, I know it's not approval, we put it in order just in case the town approved it. It's ready to go and, and when it arrives, but I will be coming back to council, uh, for approval of, of adding that equipment. And it's just, uh, the time it's taken, it's taken forever, and it's frustrating to, to everybody here and also the out there, because everybody's demanding their car, but we can only walk the street as they will, so. And we'll, we'll be coming back, and unfortunately, told the mayor, uh, uh, when we, the county implemented a DCAP system...
Yes, sir.
Uh, the minimum requirements that, laptops that were required are current ones do not meet the minimum requirements. And it's a big loss to safety, they're not running correctly, they're not, uh, uh, connecting with the internet correctly. We're not able to get, uh, communicate with dispatch correctly. So unfortunately, we're gonna have to come back, uh, and ask the, the council board to replace all those laptops in the truck car.
Would you think it'd be possible for you to be able to get that information to council with the second meeting in January?
Depends on Brian. Uh, he's got that information on the... You know, he, he...
Let's, let's work together with, with him on that.
Yes, sir.
I, I think as soon as we can, yeah, as soon as we can get in front of the council. Because it, it may take a little bit, there might be some, some help needed, things like that. We'll make sure that we give every, uh, the, uh, the proper time for it.
Yes, sir.
But I am aware of, I was made aware of the situation with the laptops, with the Daniel County change and the fact that we're gonna have to do something.
So that's the, the new mark forty-three?
That is correct, ma'am.
But it's also, I believe, getting back to try departments eventually.
Yes, it is.
Like round two or cycle two or something when they get to settle down.
And, and it's, it's not just Double Oak, on your part, it's, it's Flower Mount, it's Louisville, it's everybody.
Yeah.
This is hitting everybody all at the same time.
Unfortunately, we went, didn't have a heads up to prepare for it. It was denied until we actually implemented and figured out it's not working.
Yeah, it's a major headache for pretty much everybody.
Everybody.
Not just us.
But they're working through it. I, we have confidence in, in Dango nine-one-one, we got, they're gonna do a good job, we're gonna get this figured out.
Yes, sir.
So.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Alright. Uh, somebody from fire, Double Oak, on your part, there are reports in there. Roads committee, um, I think we're kind of...
We've already talked about that.
Yeah, we're looking, they're, they're gonna come next meeting, or...
Well, we, actually, um, crack seal was, was done. And amongst the committee, Dr. Goodman's been communicating with us, and he's gonna start working on the Double Oak lane. And I believe that, but probably you're feeding that to him, so what you and he talk comes up to be, so.
We, we want to have that, do something through next week, twenty-third, or that?
I, I, I don't think we'll have that done by...
Okay, that's fine. I don't want, I don't want to rush you.
No, no, I, I think we're, we're talking about it. We actually didn't listen to have people look at it, I don't think we'll... I don't think we'll have a list to bring to council.
I do know that there were a couple of, uh, members who, who, uh, just now gave them to their assessment. We, they actually formed a...
Okay, I did see them.
There was, there was a small delay, but, uh, I believe it's more like it's gonna be in January.
Well, and I have a question while we're kinda talking about that, um, just for clarification for everybody here. The Kings Road situation, are we gonna make that as a, like, a separate thing?
It's gonna be a separate thing.
That's kinda what I thought, but I just wanted to, like, clarify so that...
It's gotta be a separate thing.
Well, it makes sense. Thank you.
Drainage, we talked about that, obviously. Um, we'll get together and have our meeting, and then we'll get prepared for January.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you all. Uh, good, uh, item five, new business agenda, discussion consideration. Item number eleven, discussion consideration and action on resolving the resolution, casting votes to DCAP Board of Directors. Double Oak gets two votes. Eileen?
Um, I'll put everyone that was up, resume, and then factor, and we just gotta decide what we want to vote for.
And we have to do that this evening, or... Because I, what's the date on that? I don't know if I recall.
And you have to have two of items seven fifteen.
Well, that's for the next meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
Did we spend any time reviewing? I spent, I read them. I didn't have any favorites per se. There's a lot of good quality folks in here. Would anybody like to call a name out and bring it to the attention for discussion? Because we really, yeah, we definitely, with the fifteenth being done, we've got to, we've got to do it. Two minutes.
I'm trying to remember if any of these have served in prior years and have experience. That's, that's the one thing that I couldn't, I didn't actually go look at the biosheet since I was out of town until like late this afternoon.
For example, Roy Atwood has been a part of it since twenty eighteen. He's a member of the D C A board of directors. He was the one that, well, first off, I'm not voting, so.
No, but it's, it's information that's helpful since we're trying to get this done tonight.
Yeah, he has the experience. A lot of the others did not. We got Alex Buck has been on since twenty-one. And Charles Stafford has been on since two thousand and three. And folks, we're doing this, we're looking at their, their applications. And specifically, I think somebody asked if somebody would, had been on.
I find it just sometimes experiences.
Yes.
You hit somebody and knew that they have to kind of go through a learning curve since, you know, we're all, you know, property taxes are a big deal. Kind of nice to have. Sometimes change is good, sometimes having experience with how the process works is also good.
Yep.
Yeah, I've done some research and the one, we're looking at the ones that had it along. Was even on here, but they had a lot of experience. So number two, Alex, and number seven, Ann. They both look pretty experienced.
When I was reviewing also, I kind of felt the same way about them too, Alex and Ann.
Any others? Is anyone you're confident enough to want to make a motion? Or I think we had two with Alex and Ann. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, anything?
I'm fine with those two.
Counselperson, Elliot?
Well, let's go with it. Like I can, I will, unless somebody else wants to, I will at least.
Neil, would you like to comment?
Sure. Oh, comments are good. Yeah.
A recent running ton battle between Dent County Court and the appraisal district. They're not part of the, when you talk about the Dent County appraisal district, it's not part of the county.
Right.
It's a separate organization altogether. People get them mixed up sometime. And if I have a suggestion, depending a lot on Dent County Commission's court. They like property to pick, cast people on the board that they can work with. I'm just trying to test Andy E. to see who they might like. If you'd like to put this on hold, I'll give that to you.
Set, we could set this aside and back to it if you.
Yeah. Is it something like you did in the next three minutes or so?
Sure.
Um, you, you might hear from Judge E in the next thirty minutes?
I'm going to text him right now.
Okay.
We did, if we.
We can set this aside.
Yeah, you can arrange it.
So let's go ahead and table this item.
Just moving it out. If, if we table this for everybody who likes Harvard's rules, you have, you have to have a motion tabled. And then you have to have another motion to bring it back. So let's just.
We'll give it. All right, we'll go ahead and do it. Discussion consideration and action on approving June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three investment report. Eileen?
I guess we just get the point council. Where you. It's not a proposal, which is accepted.
Except, correct. Except. So obviously, I looked at the reports.
And they are posted?
Yes, yeah, they, they have posted. That is, they were posted on time. This is, we didn't get it, get it counted.
And I think, I think the investment guidelines policy, the partners' council, pretty improbable. Except.
Yeah, I saw a report.
So I have to. And the interest is nice.
Yeah, I know, I think we still under, under budget is, but you don't know.
Well, we know posted, it's locked in, but we don't know whether it comes up for renewal after the first year.
Right.
What interest rate is?
We do have a CD kind of for our own December fourth. That key. So depending on what the interest rate is, we'll just renew it with that key. We'll move to independent, whichever gives me the best interest.
Correct. So council, any other comments or anything on these reports? Do we have a motion?
I'm willing that we accept the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three investment reports as provided and posted.
And a second?
Sorry.
All right. We have a motion by Counselperson Hellier and a second by Counselperson Dietrich. Eileen, could you please call a vote?
Dr. K. Aye. Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Mr. Warden.
Aye.
Ms. Hellier.
Aye.
The item passes. Moving on to item thirteen, discussion, consideration and action on selection of a mayor pro tem. As we know, County Shamarad resigned at the beginning of November and County was the mayor pro tem. So council, this is a simple process. It's not elongated. I don't believe we have to ask for credentials in any way, shape or form. We just basically need to have a nomination for a mayor pro tem in a second. And I want to walk through the scenarios that could come about. Sometimes they're success. I don't, I don't want to sit here and say that it should always be somebody that does something. All right? It's up to this council to decide who they would like to be the mayor pro tem, who they would like to be. So reality is that I'm going to really turn it over to the council for any nominations. And then obviously, that would require a second for the, to fill the vacant spot of the mayor pro tem.
I know, anybody, Wardney, the mayor pro tem?
Is there a second?
Hi, second.
Okay, we have a motion from Counselperson Dietrich and a second from Dr. K. Eileen, could you please call a vote?
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Ms. Wardney. Mr. Wardney.
Aye.
Dr. K. Aye.
All right. Congratulations. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, Wardney, you are now mayor pro tem, Wardney. We're going to be working with you. And I think just as I'm done with it after me, we're going to do even greater things as mayor.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Can Mike Wardney vote for himself or does he need to abstain?
He can vote for himself. So we have that. So now, the contingent item that I put on the hand up was in case he was, our deputy mayor pro tem did get moved up to mayor pro tem. And that is now the contingent item number fourteen, discussion, consideration and action on selection of a deputy mayor pro tem. And again, similar to the mayor pro tem, it's not really a credential back scenario. So council, I'm going to put it back on you. Is there a motion towards the nomination for deputy mayor pro tem?
I nominate Pat Wellen for deputy mayor pro tem.
Is there a second on the motion for Pat Wellen?
Sorry.
All right, we have a motion for Pat Wellen as deputy mayor pro tem by now the mayor pro tem, Wardney. It's complicated. And we have a second by Counselperson Dietrich. Eileen, could you please call a vote?
Ms. Hellier.
Aye, I think it's a gentleman.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Mr. Wardney.
Aye.
Dr. K. Aye.
All right, Pat Wellen is absent for the evening. She's on business and she is now our deputy mayor pro tem of double Texas. So is it necessary to switch seats now or can we just do it for the next meeting?
We'll do it for the next.
And so we'll rearrange the dice for the next meeting. Kind of brings it back to you, Jim. What did we learn?
I called Judge E and Commissioner Edmiston and could not get either one up. I'm sorry. I'd like them to call back if they can, but you've got a deadline to vote, right?
Yes, we do.
I just use the best judgment.
If there's someone out there that has, knows somebody that they would recommend, I'm more than happy to have them step up to the mic and make a statement.
Can you read the names out?
Yes, we, we'll get over there. We have Roy Atwood. He's from Lewisville. Alex, Alex Buck, city of Denton. Vicky Byrd, city of Denton. Jared Butzler, city of Corinth. David Johnson, no relation, Denton County. Alicia McKinley, Lake Dallas. And Pomcall, city of Denton. Charles Stafford, Denton ISD. David Terry, city of Frisco. Do you know any of them, Jim?
No, sir, I don't. But a suggestion, if you can tell whether incumbents are not.
Yeah, we identified the.
They would probably not be as popular. And I would also think you might want to, it sounded like you didn't have anybody increasing four. I didn't hear anything less than Denton.
There was, there was none.
But some of Denton people are increasing four, which is something I think might be helpful.
Okay. So if you mind going back quickly and looking at your packet?
Okay.
Alex Buck, Buck was, he's been on since twenty-one. Alicia McKinley is, would be new to the appraisal district. She is a member of Lake Dallas ISD school board. And Pom, she's going to kill me if I ever hear, Pomcall. She's from Corinth. And she has been on the Denton cat board for one term. Charles Stafford, who's been on since two thousand and three. Wasn't a sheet filled out for David Johnson.
His files got enriched, didn't it?
Yes. Been with Habitat Humor for five years, Flowermount P and Z for ten years, United Way, he's an active perpetratorian.
Yeah.
Wellington Board, H O A board of directors, so. And he's been in Flowermount Chamber of Commerce. He's thirty-five year career in finance and banking. David Terry.
Looks like he's been on.
Yeah, he's been on for a while. And then there is Jared Butzler. And looking at his, he's been on the city of Corinth audit finance committee and a community ambassador. And then Roy T. Atwood, he's out of Carrollton, Texas. He's been on twenty eighteen. He's an attorney. He's been working there for six years, or the board of directors for six years. And he chaired the board the last two years.
Did you just text me? Let me text him back. He's at a bank with no stipulation.
Okay, thank you.
This is real time.
That's right. Vicky Byrd.
It's not hard when you don't know, I mean.
We don't, we don't, it's very difficult. And when I saw that come on, I thought this is probably the first time we do this.
You asked me a couple hours researching today and looking people up and things like that.
Well, sometimes, I don't know. It's a struggle if you want somebody with the experience because they know it's quite hard at times because, because it won't have it so hard. And that was kind of my, my sort of one, within just like that.
And all these records and things like that a little bit too. So it was, yeah, it's difficult.
Well, we want to do the best thing for all residents of our town plus Denton County, so.
Yep. And we appreciate what Jim is doing for us.
Yes. Yes.
It totally is. So while Jim is waiting back from Judge E, kind of go around again and let's throw a vote, a name out that you all think. I know you had mentioned Alex Buck and Ann.
Yeah, I saw, I think Alex Buck and Ann, then David Terry, or my, and two of those.
Yeah, David's in there too. He's, unfortunately, he won't be sitting on there. I hope he's not been on there previously.
Right.
Sometimes it's good, sometimes it is. Sometimes I don't know. I researched all three of those earlier today because I knew this was kind of got by go home.
All right, so I write them over and put again, and then, so I spent some time with that.
And those are the ones that stood out most to me.
Jean?
Did, did we decide that David Johnson had a patent served?
I, we couldn't tell because he just gave out.
Okay, ask me to make sure I wasn't confusing him with somebody else.
And Jared, I couldn't like eat even, I was online about him.
Right. Now, as Jim had mentioned, Flowermount is increasing four.
Part of it is, yes, sir.
Yeah. And he looks like he's in Wellington.
Sure.
He's in Wellington. His address looked like it was in Wellington. He's on H O A board.
A non-incumbent?
I'm sorry.
He's not an incumbent?
No, well, we can't tell.
Oh, okay.
He just led, he just gave his resume.
Yeah, he didn't have the information sheet.
We can look on their, their website to see who the incumbents are.
Are you doing anything?
I'm going to try right now.
Thank you. Sorry, folks, just bear with us. This is our live site tonight.
Plug in the application and the resume.
I didn't see it.
No, I didn't see the application. I just saw this.
Fraser Review, here we go. Not about, not about procedures. Okay. Currently, Ray Atwood is chairman, Charles Stafford is vice chairman, Ann Pomcall, is that what we're calling it?
Yeah.
Is secretary. David Terry is a member. Alex Buck is a member. And obviously, Michelle French is an ex officio member. So those are the current. So those are the current current owners today. So it looks like Mr. Johnson is not, is not certainly.
I mean, Jim, you have a good point about precinct four.
Yeah. Somebody who knows her.
There's no relation here, so.
We're good. So maybe David Johnson, if we want, who'd you say was Flower Mount?
Uh, David Johnson. He's, he's on the, he's on H O A for Wellington. Wellington's just back in the ranks, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so he, if we're looking for some new blood, somebody who's in the series, he would be a candidate worth considering for that. Just through a process of elimination.
Right. No, yeah. I mean, we could, we could do that to, to get someone who's, who's at least in our area. And then obviously we can take a look at, at the experience from there. Again, I, you, I don't get to vote on this. I'm just throwing out ideas.
I say we look at David Johnson and Alex Buck, but Alex is also from Highland Village area.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's currently on. Just, just throw that out there. He's. He's not an officer, but he's a member.
And what we all have to do then is, obviously counsel agrees on two and makes a motion on here in one second.
I move that we nominate David Johnson and Alex Buck for the DCA Board of Directors.
That was David Johnson and Alex Buck. Is there a second?
I'm sitting here holding my breath, hoping Judge E. responds.
Yeah, this is one of the times I'm not gonna gavel out the, there's no seconds. This is what America's all about.
What you do, the guy from Highland Village, since they actually have a town that's similar to ours versus Flower Mount, that's just nothing but houses all jammed together.
I think that was Alex Buck.
That's Alex Buck.
Was it? Okay, I couldn't remember. There's a whole lot of names.
We're kind of real time clarifying here.
So on the, on the, the motion right now, we've got David Johnson.
It's a lot of work to it. If someone were retired, that might be another consideration.
Let me object that you don't have to vote. One vote for one person. You could do all two votes for one person.
Correct.
Oh. Well, we could, we could vote, we could put two, our two votes, allocate that vote to Mr. Johnson if we wanted to add some weight to that. Since he is from the area and is not currently serving, who wants him for, hopefully, but it would up the, improve the odds of him getting elected, right? Kind of like having one of the dice.
Alex?
Okay. All right, well, this. Yeah, I think Alex Buck will vote for two votes.
Hold on, because I have to give, we need to second on the motion. So we'll kill the motion for David Johnson and Alex Buck is now.
Well, it just died for life besides that.
Right. All right. Is there another motion, counsel?
I move that we use both of our votes for Alex Buck for the Denton Cat Board of Directors.
Motion from Counselperson Dietrich and a second from Counselperson Dr. K. I'll give that to this. Do we, so we've got a motion and second, Eileen, please call a vote.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Mr. Gordon.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Dr. K.
Aye.
The agenda item passes. We will be putting in two votes for Alex Buck from Doubleup Texas. Thank you, counsel. I know that's not an easy thing, but I appreciate you taking the time. All right. So now we're moving on to item 15, and that is counsel and staff announcements and comments. I do have some announcements real quick to make. Congratulations to the Crossing Guard Vicki Lineweather on her second anniversary with the town on December 6th. And congratulations to Officer Summer Hausmans on her one year anniversary with the town on December 9th. We have the Doubleup Women's Club Annual Winter Children's Event this Saturday, December 9th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. here at the Town Hall. Get the word out on that, please. And of course, I think the, the most cherished thing about what Doubleup does besides the Fourth of July is the Doubleup Volunteer Fire Department Santa Around Town. And that is on Sunday, December 10th.
There will be lots of sirens and horns and bonkings. We moved our horse here, we moved here, we had no idea what was going on.
Same with us. I kept running around the town trying to find a fire. So counsel and staff, any other announcements? Any other announcements?
I have one or comment. This is a little bit old business, but I'll clarify, just in case anybody's wondering. For the record, I did not and have not contacted any fire department requesting a hit or quotation or EMS services. As the mayor stated, if someone did, then it's incumbent on our mayor to obtain specific details, you can fire chief or chiefs contacted noting the name or names of the person or persons making the request. Dates requested, method of communication, get this in writing, have the chief sign it and report back to the town. And I'm saying this because anything less is speculation and not slated. That is all.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
Yeah, I got one.
Yes, sir.
So it was, we went around today and it's going, going to continue that, you know, we ask for applications or whatever it may be, or whatever positions there may be. But one of the things that came up in this last time of what it takes to be a elected official here in Doubleup. A lot of people that I've known have made a comment that you have to live a year in Doubleup. And the actual application states that you only have to live six months in Doubleup. You have to live a year in the state of Texas. And so I just want to clarify that because several people have also made comments that that's supposed to be a year in Doubleup. And just wanted to make sure people are aware of that. Also, there was, it's more of a clarification of the holidays. I think that, you know, we all deserve, if we're working for certain employees, to get off a little bit early before Christmas or Thanksgiving or what. But as a town, that's approved by the council. And it's not directly been approved or disapproved in any form or fashion. There's a set of dates that the administration and staff get off, but usually doesn't include a half day or so before the holidays or whatever it may be. So I think it's been brought up as a concern by some people and the idea that, that if they're supposed to get off certain days and they get off those days, they're supposed to get off more, that it has to be approved by the council. So as we're looking up, coming up on the next holiday season, that we have Christmas and New Years. Could we put on the agenda item for our next town council meeting that we approve or disapprove or whatever it may be, what those half days are? So the staff knows what they are, so they can take them off or not take them off. Or if they need to take them off without pay, or if they need to take them off using their personal time. So that can be clarified and determined before that.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, this would be an agenda item specifically requesting times and dates on any early closing outside of the holiday hours.
Correct.
Correct. We can put that on. We will have it on the 20th.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Why do I keep saying eighteen?
Well, I, I looked on my calendar because you said the 20th and I'm like, I can't do the math. Fourteen and four, double number twenty.
It's been a long time.
No, I'm just saying it's the eighteen, just so.
I'll be there on the eighteen.
Wait.
If I'm not.
Then you'll have to come on the twentieth.
Awesome. All right, based upon the, the, the facts of that, the last exchange, this meeting is adjourned at eighteen. Thank you all.
May I have one more question?
No, no.
It's outside of town.
I'm here, I do like.
And the road got, I'm talking about fixing your problem here already. And it's him and the road's higher, so we're still, we're really bad. I mean, you guys, I don't think we direct that, right? We're just trying to back my point. Like the landscape is a bit out, like it'll, it'll take a whole. I actually want to find out something, like an actual engineer about to get, like a look at the yard and tell us, that's actually still, that's my one miss. Like what's your recommendation, you know, all over? I had to answer something I thought, I'm going to sort of.
Yeah. Yeah, I actually had some tests that they were, they were building something in my backyard, so I had to shoot it, so I got those back. We need that fan to get into it.